We are live.
You're muted Chair Tao.
Thank you. This evening's planning commission meeting will be delayed at the start to 7:05. We're getting the last minute information loaded on to the system. So appreciate everyone's patience and we will work through this as fast as we can. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the republic.
Just for everyone's information, to start about this evening's planning commission meeting will be delayed to approximately 7:05 and we appreciate everyone's patience.
Let's pledge allegiance to the plan. Nice saying to know.
I'm sorry, I think I just realized I was on mute. So welcome everyone and appreciate everyone's patience this evening in the delayed of the start of tonight's planning commission meeting. And so welcome everyone to the city of Milpitas, September 8, 2021, planning commission meeting. And as a public service announcement, any members of the public who wish to speak to the speak on tonight's public hearing, on the public forum or the public hearing item may do so by following the instructions that tonight's for tonight's meeting agenda. And that may be this IQ IT will queue in to the item that which you may wish to speak on. So with that said, like to call the meeting to order. And the next item here is pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Galan, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Commissioner Galan. And the next agenda item here is roll call. Understand that Commissioner Belong is has an excused absence this evening due to just general general illness. And so would the commission secretary please take the roll call?
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. I'll now take attendance, starting with Commissioner Albana.
Absent.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Here.
Commissioner Belong is absent this evening. Vice Chair Chuan.
Present.
Commissioner Ciardella.
Present.
Commissioner Galang.
Absent.
And Chair Tao.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Medina. Appreciate it. And the next agenda item here is the conflict of interest declaration with the city attorney, political commissioners, please.
Yes, thanks Chair. I ask whether any of the commissioners have a financial or personal conflict of interest on any of the items before you tonight? I'll start with Commissioner Gollum.
No.
Commissioner Ciardella.
No.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Belong is absent. Commissioner Alcorn.
None.
Vice Chair Chuan.
None.
And Chair Tao.
None.
Let the record reflect none to that question.
Thank you, City Attorney. And moving on to the next agenda item here is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. And staff, any changes to this evening's agenda?
Thank you Chair, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you Director Thomas. And so may I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Okay, the move to approve tonight's meeting agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Galan and a second by Commissioner Albana. And I'll go down for the vote. And Commissioner Albana.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Galan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ciardella.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well. Motion passes 6-0 and the commissioner belong absent. And the next agenda item here is the approval of the minutes. And this is for the August 11th. Meeting minutes for August 11th and that the special meeting as well as the the regular meeting. So I'll go ahead to the August 11th meeting minutes first. Any changes to the meeting minutes, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Staff, any changes to the meeting minutes?
No changes to the minutes, thank you.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to approve the August 11th, 21 meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the August 11th meeting minutes.
Thank you Vice Chair. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Chuan and a second by Commissioner Ciardella. And I'll go down, go down the line for commissioner votes. Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Albana, you.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Galan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ciardella.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well. Motion passes 6-0. And moving on to the August 25th, 2021, special meeting minutes. Commissioners, any changes? Okay, seeing none. And staff, any changes to the to the meeting minutes?
No changes, Mr Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And then may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for the special, motion to approve the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you Vice Chair. And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I picked up Commissioner Galan. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Chuan and a second by Commissioner Galan. So I'll I'll go down the line for the commissioner votes. And Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Commissioner Galan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ciardella.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well. Motion passes 6-0. And the next meeting minutes for approval is the August 25th, the regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, any changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. And Chair, staff, any changes?
Thank you, Mr Chair. No changes to the minutes.
Thank you very much. And may I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Okay, motion approved at August 25th, 2021, regular meeting minutes by Commissioner Albana. And may I have a second, please? Okay, I got it from Commissioner Ciardella. So a motion by Commissioner Albana and a second by Commissioner Ciardella. And I'll call for the votes. And Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Commissioner Galan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ciardella.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well. Motion passes 6-0. And the next agenda item here is announcements. Planning Commissioners, any announcements? Anybody? Okay, thank you. And staff, any announcements?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I do not have any announcements tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Director Thomas, just out of curiosity, in terms of the the city hall reopening, the timeframe is still on the same schedule as discussed in the previous meeting?
Yes, actually, city hall is has reopened as of this week and were there available. We were open for the last two weeks of, we were open in August as well, the last two weeks by appointment only. But now the doors are open. And so if anyone has business to do at city hall, they're welcome to come. They are asked to our mask. And in some cases, they will be asked to maintain social distancing.
Thank you, planning director. We appreciate it. And the next agenda item here is a public forum. Those interested are invited to address planning commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda or leave your Zoom webinar, instructions above. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the reporting secretary's record. And comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As an as an item not listed on the agenda, no response is required from city staff or the planning commission, and no action can be taken. Planning commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. So Ms Medina, do we have any members of the public in the queue?
Chair, at this time, we do not have any members in the queue for public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And so we're moving on to the next, the next segment of the tonight's agenda, that's public hearing and Director Thomas, if you will.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Let me pull that up. So our first item for public hearing and the only item for public hearing tonight is a hotel project. It's called the Tribute Hotel. That is a Marriott brand tribute. It's located at 1851 McCarthy Boulevard. This type of project requires a site development permit. There's also a conditional use permit, a tree removal permit, and an environmental assessment. And our senior planner, Michael Fassadi, is here to present the the details of the project. We have been working on this for quite some time and we're happy to be able to present it to you tonight for your consideration. Turn the time over to Michael.
Mr Fassadi, welcome.
Thank you Chair Tao. Thank you Director Thomas. Planning Commissioners, fellow staff and residents, members of the public. I am Michael Fassadi. I'm a senior planner here with the city of Milpitas. And the item in front of you is an application for a new hotel in the city. The application is for a number of different items. The site development permit or SDP will allow the development of a five-story hotel building over a one-story parking garage with a maximum height of 75 feet, 216 rooms, and amenity areas associated with the operation of the hotel on a 2.71 acre site. The conditional use permit, also known as CUP, will allow the operation of the hotel, a floor area ratio of, or also known as an FAR of 1.1, and the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. The tree removal permit will allow the removal of 36 protected trees. Additional applications with the project include a parking reduction and an environmental assessment to for review under, to review the project under CEQA. This is the aerial image of the site at 1851 McCarthy Boulevard, which is located around light industrial uses and buildings to the northeast and south and Coyote Creek Trail to the west. This is in the lower southern quadrant of the city of Milpitas and near Montague Expressway. This is the zoning map of the property. The light industrial is shown as the gray areas to the north with highway services in red to the east and to the south. The green portion of the, the green portion of the map is Coyote Creek Trail. The project requires a site development permit to develop a one-story parking garage with five floors of hotel guest rooms. The following rendering is how the project will face McCarthy Boulevard as viewed from a person driving southbound on McCarthy Boulevard in the upper left image, or a person driving northbound on McCarthy Boulevard in the bottom right image. The project includes a ground floor parking garage with onsite parking equaling 241 parking spaces with the use of parking stackers, valet parking, and uncovered onsite parking spaces. The first level, just right above the garage, will include a guest lounge, an approximately 3,700 square foot meeting room, an eatery, bar lounge, guest lounge, fitness facility, laundry facility, and approximately 8,600 square foot outdoor patio and pool area, all for guests. The remaining levels will each have 54 guest rooms totaling 216 rooms. The rooms will range in size from 300 to 635 square feet. A conditional use permit was required to allow the hotel lodging use onsite, which is a conditional use, as well as a FAR of 1.1, and the sale and service of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. Staff has found the proposed use of the hotels appropriate as the project is surrounded by companies that have both domestic, international employees and clients, as well as complementary lodging uses that is demonstrated within the map. Both the Sheraton and Sonesta are located within or less than a half, quarter mile away. Not shown on the map is the Future Element and AC Hotel located on Alder Drive and Tasman Boulevard, or Tasman Drive and Alder Drive. And that's approximately one mile away north of the site. The applicant proposed an exception to go above the 0.5 FAR standard associated with parcels within the highway service zoning designation. They're proposing to do a development of 1.1 FAR. In order for the city to allow such an exception, two findings must be made. The first finding is that the proposed development will generate low peak hour traffic. And the second finding is that the project will not create a dominating visual prominence. A traffic impact analysis was generated and was reviewed by both our environmental consultant and transportation manager. And as discussed in detail within the staff report, found the hotel project would not generate high peak hour traffic as the finding requires. As for the second finding, the architect has designed a building with strong horizontal orientation anchored by towering elements with gently angled roof lines on the north and south ends of the building. The middle section features a white stucco band that extends vertically and horizontally between the corner towers and contrasts with the darker panels under the windows. Ground floor parking garage includes a pale orange highlights as an accent color to add visual interest to the project. It's for these reasons that the project will not create a dominant dominating visual prominence. See here. The conditional use permit also requires, or the applicant has also requested an onsite alcohol sales license, also known as a type 47 license. By having such a license, the operator would be allowed to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on premises. Planning staff had the police department review the conditional use permit along with other departments, and appropriate conditions were placed on this operation to create a safe environment for alcohol sale and consumption. Those conditions include that the hotel operator must also operate a bona fide eating place, a restaurant within the hotel, and must have specific, specific teachings for the employees to serve the cell and serve alcohol. There's a specific program that's conditioned that employees must take in order to be suitable to sell and serve alcohol. In May 2021, the city adopted a new ordinance, ordinance number 38.841, which reduced the minimum parking standards for hotel uses. Furthermore, the ordinance established the use of transportation demand management, also known as TDM measures, to further reduce required onsite parking. Without taking advantage of the TDM measures, the project would require to be to develop 258 parking spaces. Instead, the developer chose to incorporate TDM measures such as installing parking stackers, incorporating valet parking, dedicating parking locations for pickup and drop off, offering transit passes to guests, providing public transit information to guests, and marketing transit options, all to reduce the amount of parking required. By incorporating such measures, a developer is allowed to deduct up to 10% of their total parking requirement from their parking count, which in for this project reduced the parking requirement to 232 spaces. The applicant has proposed 241 spaces demonstrating that they are compliant with city code as shown on this table. Also discussed in the staff report, 36 protected trees are proposed to be removed. As demonstrated on the site plan, this is a site plan of the landscape plan of the proposed hotel, nearly all the trees onsite, both protected and non-protected, must be removed in order to make room for this development. The applicant has met the requirement of the city code by providing replacement trees in a two to one ratio. In other words, at least 72 trees will be planted onsite to make up for the 36 protected trees that are proposed to be removed. The landscape exhibit is an conceptual plan showing that where those trees will be planted, with most of those trees being planted along the periphery. Tree species include birch, western red bud, red maple, and crepe myrtle. A detailed analysis and discussion is located in the staff report. Findings have been made in the affirmative for the project per the Milpitas zoning ordinance. The findings include a layout that the design, the requirements include that a layout and the design of the project is compatible and harmonious with adjacent surrounding development. There's findings that need to demonstrate consistency with the general plan and zoning ordinance, as well as the proposed use will not be detrimental to property or improvements in the vicinity, nor public health, welfare, and safety. Those findings are addressed in detail in both the staff report and the resolution. The city CEQA consultant prepared an initial study mitigated negative declaration for the project at 1851 McCarthy Boulevard. And the city has filed a notice of intent with the county clerk. The CEQA document was posted online for public review between August 18th until today, and no comments have been received. Staff has also found the project to be consistent and exempt from CEQA per section 15183 of the CEQA guidelines, and that this project is consistent with the community plan, general plan, and zoning of the district. Prior to the public notice, the city tried to solicit public comment on the project plans through an online public forum on the city's website. This, I'll remind the commission, is our our community meeting. But with COVID, we've had to push a bunch of our projects online to make sure that residents are aware of projects happening in the city. The project plans, project description, and contact information was placed online back in April of 2021. The project was also noticed with postcards, as well as placed within, a notice was placed within the Milpitas Post and the city website. To date, no comments have been received. In closing, staff recommends opening and closing the public hearing, considering the ISMND, an added exemption in accordance with California Environmental Equality Act, and adopting resolution 21-020, approving site development permit ST19-0012, conditional use permit number UP19-0012, tree removal permit number TR19-0030, and environmental assessment number EA19-0008, subject to the findings and attached conditions of approval. Furthermore, I'd like the commission to know that representatives from the project applicants team are available. They have a presentation they'd like to demonstrate to you. As well as the city, we have our, we currently have the CEQA consultant in the audience, Sue Lee, as well as other department representatives within the city, such as fire and economic development. This concludes staff summary of the proposed project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Fassadi. And can we also have, can we have the applicant's presentation, then we'll go ahead and open to the two questions.
You sure can. Just give me one moment. Okay, I believe, and Liz, I may need your assistance with this. Sam Som and Fred Mayer would like to present on this project.
Yeah, and Katie as well.
And Katie, you as well. All right.
Okay, well, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Michael, for the technical detail that you have provided to the planning commission. Like to say good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Som and along with my partner Katie Yu and Fred Meyer, we would like to give you further insight of the overall vision and economic impact of the hotel development and project. So therefore, we would like to briefly present four main topic in relation to the hotel development. We'd like to break it down to four categories. The first one is the overview and project summary. Second will be the hotel. Second will be the hotel brand, budget and design vision. Third will be the forecast economic impact to the city. And lastly, the value that we can bring in and contribute to the community. So I'll turn this over to Fred right now.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks again, Michael. As you mentioned, our site is in the business park and research development of the highway services location there where we are nowhere near any residences or schools. The existing site currently is a vacant C-class two-story office building. And as you have heard from Michael, then we are proposing to develop and a construction of a luxury tribute hotel, which is part of the Marriott International portfolio. Currently, this will be the largest site designated for hotel development in the Bay Area as it has a land mass of about 118,000 square feet, which is about 2.71 acres of lot size. Some of the highlights of this luxury hotel, the suites, as you mentioned, is 216 and they are full executive suite, so they are large. It'll have a multi-function purpose room, which is the event center and ballroom for functions. The outdoor pool and state-of-the-art fitness center. It'll have the elevated portico chay, which has a grand entrance into the site and gets you a nice relaxing feeling coming in. And it'll have the bar lounge and the eatery, the fresh outdoor patio experience. And also, as mentioned itself, parking and valet parking there. And as mentioned too, we are overparked by 11 additional spaces, so plenty of parking. We also have the designated bike, scooters and right chair area. We also want to incorporate public arts by having a large public art wall on the portico chay. And we also will have a coworking collaborative spaces for Instagrammers, podcasters and small meeting space. Summing it kind of up, we are going to uphold all of the Marriott strict high standards of security protocol for all his guests and staff. All employees will be provided with transportation passes to encourage carpooling or public transportation. And we will do a partnership with Uber and Lyft for public transportation and give hotel credits out for our guests. Again, thank you very much.
Next slide, Michael. So the question is, why do we want to invest in Milpitas? The answer is pretty simple. Let's start up with California in general. California is the only state in the U.S. that attract majority of oversea investor, corporation and entrepreneur. Secondly, its GDP is 3.1 trillion, ranking fifth in the world economy. Here in the greater Bay Area has over 7 million people. It contribute roughly 748 billions, ranking 19 in the world's economy. So just us Bay Area, we, we contribute about 25 to the overall California GDP. Lastly, Milpitas stands as the number one fastest growing city in Silicon Valley and the second fastest growing city in California. With that all said, the economic strength of Milpitas is largely reflected by the strong presence of technology in the Silicon Valley. The region itself is recognized around the world for its contribution to the high-tech industry from computer software to social media company. Milpitas is in advantageous position for future economic development and growth. With the recent planning update in the southwestern employment area, this hotel align itself with the city rapid demands and expansion. Next slide, please. In terms of design, our guide, our guiding principle for the architectural and interior design and spirit of the hotel is a compelling concept of Milpitas evolution and transformation. We believe Milpitas core value represent the spirited family, the aspiring, aspiring voyager and the budding professional. Milpitas is defined by its rolling hill of golden wildflowers nurturing under the warmth of a steady climate. Milpitas is renowned for its history as an agricultural town with much of its success stemming from the cultivation of corn. Milpitas not only serves as a physical crossroad, but it becomes a pathway for traveler and technology in the renewed frontier. Our message to our guests and visitor is that the hotel tribute of Milpitas is the source of gathering warmth and cultivating new beginning, nurturing relationship and expanding opportunity. So our project budget and overall cost is estimated to be about $70 million. The funding source will be off self-financing. And we will, we will be branded like Fred mentioned earlier, it's all upscale 4.5 star Marriott Tribute, one of their luxury brand. Marriott themselves is very protective of its upscale brand. It is very difficult to get approval. And we had to undergo vigorous wedding process, various verification and qualification. Ultimately going up the chain of command and then having to be unanimously approved by the board of director of the Marriott. After 12 months of tremendous effort, we were able to secure the Marriott flagship and are able to bring this valuable opportunity to the city of Milpitas. As you could see, Marriott is considered number one brand worldwide. They have 150 million loyalty members with 7,700 properties and are contracted with a top 1,000 company for bookings and reservation. Just a little bit about the market forecast. Technology profession are optimistic with the rebound in business travel and the sign of recovery are very encouraging. Industry expert expect a V-shaped recovery with demand resuming rapidly due to an increase in vaccination and economic recovery. Based on prior shock to tourism and the economy, we would anticipate that it will take a minimum of two to four years for the full recovery. Market trends indicate that hotel guests will demand newer and more of an upper scale rather than any other type of hotel in the future. Before I turn this over to Katie to talk about the economic impact, I think it's important to mention that prior to the hotel being built, it would have contributed several millions of dollars in development, billing permit and school fees to the city. Katie will share the insight on the other perpetual revenue stream from, for the city and community upon the completion of the hotel.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening, everyone. The economic impact to local and regional economies from hotel development is typically separated from four categories. Number one, direct. Number two, physical. Number three, indirect. Number four, induced, in which can be measured in the short term and long term. Though the very first direct impact is a TOT tax. Per the performer approved by Marriott Hotel. So for year one, once the hotel is in operation, with the total revenue of more than 13 million, so the TOT tabs we bring to the city is going to be around $2 million. Again, this is a very conservative number. We're using 72.9% of room occupancy for this estimation. Before pandemic, this location, Marriott estimated with more than 80% room occupancy. So again, we are using a conservative number for the estimate. And the second direct economic impact is a property tax. So the current real estate tax today is only $87,000. But with the rebuild construction finishing completed, so the new estimated real estate tax, property tax is going to be more than $1.5 million. And then the third direct impact is the job positions this project will provide. So the first stage is construction stage. That will generate more than 300 jobs. And then after the construction is completed, so the hotel operation will need at least 65 full-time job positions for the hotel operation. So therefore, what we want to bring to the city is not only a hotel, but a lifestyle, a ecosystem. So a very typical example is a Genting Group Las Vegas. This group acquired Resource World in 2009. So what they brought to Las Vegas is not only a fully renovated new hotel, but also a Michelin restaurant, a world-class performing arts center. So therefore, you know, we hope that what we bring to the city is more than just a hotel. So I want to hand this to my partner Sam and talking about the indirect impact and the values we bring to the community. Thank you.
Yes, Katie just spoke of the direct and the fiscal economic impact. I will go over briefly over the indirect and induced portion of it. Indirect essentially mean the capital benefit for the local and surrounding businesses, contractors, suppliers, telecommunications, and utility companies. Induce is the economic effects generated when employee and supplier re-spend their earning on local purchases such as gas, food and entertainment before or after work. So in addition to that, as you could see, on average, the study, study shows that every person that come and stay at a hotel, they spend an average of $73 in restaurant and bars. They also spend about $87 in entertainment and transportation. These are hotel guests. So with that said, our estimation with the 216 room based on the 73 occupancy, 6 million of it is pretty much up for grab in the surrounding businesses and 7.5 millions are pretty much up for grab for the surrounding entertainment such as as you, as you could see with the Legoland, David Buster, the Great Mall, Big Al. So this will bring a lot of the other revenue to the surrounding business as well. But the most important thing I think is how, how do we bring great value to the community? We are very committed to community partnership. Katie, myself and Fred have been participating in the food pantry sponsoring the high school football. I think Katie hosted the banquet for them after they won their state title. Yeah. So we've been committed for the last, even during the pandemic, we do, we donate a lot of food to the pantry as well and the surrounding community and the churches as well. But let's talk about the hotel. How we could enhance the value of the community? We bring in, we bring in value to the community by promoting public art, by hosting various art gallery events and functions. It will elevate social experience by becoming the hotbed. Most likely, we'd like to shoot for what we call the new downtown of social entertainment network and collaboration. It will invite travelers to explore and share adventure by embracing new discovery and foster unforgettable memories. It will promote innovation by attracting top talent and creative minds in by providing an environment and hybrid and hybrid working space where people can collaborate since many may not return to the office full time. In conclusion, hotels are considered as an important economic component of any community. Having a prestigious hotel such as the luxury brand of Marriott Tribute will garner a great scale of recognition internationally, instill community pride, sprout new life for the city, ultimately making Milpitas a more desired place to live, work and play. In conclusion, we would like to thank the city of Milpitas and all of its staff for their hard work. There's a portion of this presentation that we had to remove, which is the letter of support from Cisco System and Quantum for the commitment to booking rooms when and meeting rooms when, when the property is complete, when the hotel is complete. And the letter of support from all the local churches, community leaders and all of the resident and business owner throughout the city that had generated some of the letters to support us for this, for, for this hearing. And lastly, thank you to all of the planning commissioner for your time and the opportunity and your great city. And I think we could turn to question and answer at this point, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Som, and for your presentation. We appreciate it. And at this point, commissioners, any particular questions for senior planner Fassali and also the ownership team?
I have a, I have a couple.
Yes, Commissioner Elkhorn, please.
So, sorry, someone's phoned one off. Um, so, uh, the, my, my last name is actually A L C O R N. It was spelt wrong on that last slide. But anyways, the hotel amenities, are they going to be open to the public or reserved for guests? Like amenities such as like the pool, the bar, there's the, I'm guessing the event stuff like the ballroom and stuff will be rentable, but like if, if there's a bar or restaurant, is that open to the public or is that just for guests?
That's an interesting question because we were very restricted by the parking requirement. The pool has to be restricted to only guests as of this moment. We, we need key card for I guess liability or whatnot. Also, we're working with planning right now to see how we could ultimately our vision, as Katie mentioned, we actually wanted to bring a Michelin star hotel into this restaurant to open up to the community. We actually have the community in mind when we were doing this project. But because of the limitation in parking, we had to reduce a certain area to the public. And that I think maybe Mr. Thomas or Michael can help answer that question. But ultimately, we would like to provide all these amenities to the community as well.
I can speak to the parking really quickly.
Yeah, please, please.
This, as the planning commission knows well, this is always an issue with most sites, whether it's residential, commercial or hotel development. To address this earlier this year, you'll recall that the city took steps to reduce its hotel parking requirements, as was noted in the staff report and in the presentation. I would just say really quickly, the old, the old parking requirement was one parking space per room. That, that's the, this is for the minimum parking requirement. That was reduced to 0.7 units or 0.7 parking spaces per room. And then a hotel is actually eligible to get additional parking reductions through the transportation demand management items that Mr. Fassati touched upon. Our zoning ordinance actually provides for several additional types of TDM measures, which this applicant has not taken full advantage of. Some of those are, are not eligible because they're, for example, they're not located next to a light rail line that would give them some additional, but I noted some of the ones that they haven't yet taken advantage of that they could if they wanted to further reduce their parking requirement. In addition, so they're providing mechanical lifts, the valet parking, bicycles onsite, pickup and drop off transit cards and they'll, they'll provide transit information on their website and a shuttle. So well, they'll take advantage of the city shuttle service and that provided them, I think, up to 34 points, which gets them a 10% parking reduction. If they added such things, so I would add those things are, while they're commendable, really as we look down the list of TDM measures in our zoning ordinance, those are really the low hanging fruit. If they were to go with some additional steps like providing monthly transit passes to their employees, that's 10 additional points. A dedicated airport shuttle, they're very close to San Jose Airport would garner them an additional 10 points. And if they use that same shuttle to provide service to say the Great Mall and to the Bart Station and maybe the Levi Stadium, if there's events in town, that would get them additional five or five to 10 points. That would, just as an example, that would get them an additional up to almost 60 points, which would get them a 20 to 30% parking reduction rather than the 10% parking reduction they have now. So if parking is an issue, there are, sorry to go on and on about this, but if parking is an issue here, there are other options available to this applicant to further reduce their parking. And they can also, I know that they tried working with a, another big one is a shared parking agreement and there's either up to 15 to 20%, excuse me, 15, up to 10 to 15 points are available to them just by getting a shared parking agreement with one of the neighboring land uses. So again, many options available for parking reductions here if that's the issue.
I, I would like some clarification here. So they, they mentioned they're restricted on parking and that's why they don't really want to open their amenities up to the public. If that is the case, sure, that's somewhat understandable, but it's out, is, is there a parking restriction here? It doesn't look like there are any because they, well, for one, I mean, they designed the project. They, I'm, I'm sure they could work on a way to actually get a few more spots there, maybe even 15 spots for, you know, people who aren't staying there to come drive over. That's besides the point. you know, people who aren't staying there to come drive over. That's besides the point. But you just brought up a bunch of ways where they can reduce their parking, but wouldn't that add to the parking restriction? If they have even less parking or, or i- is it that they need a certain amount of parking spot set aside for guests only, not for the public? And that's why they have a parking restriction because I know they have a little bit more than two hundred, I know they have more than two hundred, but let's say out of two hundred spots, a hundred and ninety need to be set aside just for actual guests. So is that the case? Is it the former or the latter here?
Yeah, it's not so much a restriction. There's a, there's a minimum parking requirement, and so that's what we're trying to reach. So the, I don't know if you want to bring up the table again, Michael. It's also in the staff report. So the minimum parking requirement is the point seven per room, and then because they have these other added, the, the can, the gathering area and the restaurant, then tho- those are additional. So you add all those together and that's the minimum parking requirement. It's not, it's not so much a restriction. But, but the, in that regard, the, the number of parking spaces does drive how much development can occur on the site, just like any development across the city. So what, what the city has done is, has added in those transportation demand, it's really parking demand management measures on how many points they can actually reduce their parking requirement. So as you can see here with the two hundred and sixteen rooms plus the meeting plus the bar, their, their parking requirement right now, under the reduced requirement, it would have been much more under the, the previous, the city's previous requirements, but right now, the total required is two hundred and fifty-eight, and they were able to reduce that down with a ten percent parking credit for those TDM measures. And that's why I'm saying that's a ten percent reduction. They, by just implementing a couple of other larger TDM measures, they could bring, they could actually get a twenty to thirty percent parking reduction. Yeah, so so that, that way, sorry, so that way, they can keep the number of parking spaces. They have two hundred and forty-one, but what we're really looking at is looking, we're reducing the requirement from the two thirty-two. It could go down to like, say, two hundred, and then those additional forty-one spaces are opened up for the visitors that would come to the site for other things.
Okay, so the issue here is they need two hundred and something parking spaces for just paying guests for the estimated, I think it was seventy-two percent-ish, seventy-two, seventy-three percent. So they need a certain amount of parking spaces dedicated to just those guests. And that's, that's what they're calling a parking restriction, is they need that many spots set aside for just that. Is, is that?
Yeah, they're calling it straight. It's not a restriction. So that's the first line on the hotel. This is the reason why we reduced it, that the old standard was one parking space per room, and we reduced it to point seven per room because as was shown, the average occupancy of any hotel is around point seven. If you're in a point eight, point nine, you're doing really well, but usually, you know, the average hotel occupancy is point seven. So it was, we adopted a point seven per room because that, so that, that gives us a hundred and fifty, just for the hotel, a hundred and fifty part, one parking spaces. So if they're looking at increasing the size of the meeting room or increasing the size of the bar or lounge, it would increase those, those are standards are shown here, sixty, one space for six square foot or one space for thirty square foot. If either of those increases, then the total parking required will also go up. But commensurate with that, they can also get a larger parking credit and bring that down. So it, it, there, there's several different variables going in here that, that it's not that there's a parking restriction, but the number, the avail, the amount of space that's available for parking restricts the amount of development that can occur.
Don't get us wrong. We love to open our facility to the public. We love to do, to bring the Michelin restaurant to the city. However, there are certain requirements we have to follow, and we currently are working with Mr. Nate Thomas today and try to find a solution.
Well, I'm sorry to, to kind of be, be harsh here, but you know, in your guys' presentation, you, you were very upfront and very, very vocal about, you know, being there not just as a profitable business for yourself, but being there for the community. I feel like if, if, if the actions actually backed up those words a hundred percent, you would have come to the table here with a solution, not waited till today to try to find a solution. I'm not, I'm not, you know, it, it's a, it's a nice hotel. Don't get me wrong. It's a beautiful hotel. This is, this is, it's very gorgeous. I just, I don't see the, the community effort here. Because you're kind of, you're, you're saying, oh, you know, we, we have all this great stuff and we love the community and we can't wait to be a community partner. We have all these great stuff, but you know what? We're, we're not really gonna open it up to the community just for paying guests, people paying us money. Because, you know, sorry, we don't have the parking, but there's a lot of options for parking.
Let, let me just add, add one more thing there. The community, they are open to the bar space and to the lounge area. So that is open to the public there, right?
Okay.
The key cards like my friend Sam said is to the pool, to the outside. They can't go to that section.
Yeah, that totally makes sense.
Yes, so the public can come in, enjoy the lounge, enjoy the bar. That is actually up for it, and that's in this parking diagram here. Do it when they come to the banquet hall and stuff, that is also for the public to, you know, utilize there, and then they in addition to the art too, all that is in there. The one section that they can't go in it, we, hopefully we can address no later, is possibly for the restaurant, the eatery itself. That is the one section not. You know, so all the other stuff is pretty much open, the pool can liability, that makes sense. The lobby, the bar area, the lounge area, right? And then also if they have the banquet room, the wedding and stuff of that nature, and the art exhibitions of that things, those are all open to the public. So there isn't much that we're hiding from you there. It's just, you know, pool card liability that's giving and the restaurant aspect of it.
Okay, that is, that is a much more clear answer. So I, I appreciate that because that, that was the initial question.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it, it's okay, it's okay. That, that's why, that's why we're talking, so I'm asking, so I can, I can get the, get the, the all the details here. Okay, so and then to open up the restaurant to the public, that would require some other parking configurations. Is, is that, is that, so is that where the, your guys' what you call parking restriction? Is that, is that where that comes into play, is opening up the restaurant to the public?
That is correct, but the public still, they could still get food from the bar area. They can, because it's gonna be the same menu there, you know, so they can get it there. It's just probably the seat, it's just gonna be no splitting hairs. They can't sit inside the restaurant per se, you know.
Okay.
But some of this overlap, but they can probably still order food and all that stuff, get it in the bar in the lounge area.
Okay, okay, that, that makes a lot more sense to me because that's why I kept asking questions because I was very confused by the initial answer, but the, what, the clarification you just gave me makes a lot more sense than this. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm good, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elkhorn. Any other commissioners with a questions? Since I am not able to see everyone's face or scrolling through the, the raised hands, not seeing that. Anyone else has questions for the applicant or Mr. Fasadi at this point?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Siradella.
Yeah, I've just got a question for either Al Zamora or whoever wants to answer it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Siradella. So with the city staff, we will have a separate section
Okay.
For, for a fire, for the, the two attending, the two gentlemen attending this evening from the staff side. Then we, we have Economic Development Director Andrade, as well as Assistant Fire Marshal Jaime Garcia. So we will separately address all to those two gentlemen. So this is for the applicant as well as for the planning staff. So any, any questions from Siradella, Commissioner Siradella for the planning staff or the applicant?
Yeah, for planning staff.
Please.
Okay, the ballroom, and this question's for Al Zamora. What's the occupancy?
Commissioner Siradella, in terms for, for planning staff, as stated earlier, for fire department as well as for, for economic development. We will have those two gentlemen coming out separately. So at that point in time, if you will, hold your question when the, when the fire department is requested on for the, for the question answers.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the planning staff?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a few, I have a question.
Commissioner Albana, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to ask the Sam or Katie or Fred. First, I'm very happy with the design. I like the design that you're bringing into the Milpitas. And also, Mr. Ned Thomas has explained some of my questions already with regards to the parking. I had a quick question because it's with Marriott. Will each room have like a little kitchenette for each of the guests?
No, will not.
It will not?
No.
Okay.
It, it's still considered, the room is very luxurious. It has what, like it's gonna have the bedroom in there, the, the bathroom, and it's what's gonna, it has gonna have some, like almost like a small little living room, so it's gonna be very spacious.
I see, I see. You know, because some of the Marriott's residential, they have like a little, you know, a little
Yeah, so, so, so this is closer to the luxury brand. The, the residential is more of the extended stay.
Okay.
More of an entry level at that, at that stage.
Yeah, that, that was my question if it was more in the luxury. Well, I'm so happy. Congratulations that you even got the Marriott and just your flagship. Chair, that's all. I have that, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana, and the, the commissioners, the questions for did I, did I hear someone? I'm sorry.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Galan.
Yes, I have a question regarding about the meeting room. What's the maximum capacity of that meeting room?
So Cory, can you please help answer the question? Our architect also is at the meeting today.
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing clear.
So the, the, the capacity and, and my colleague Rory O'Connell also is with me. We've got a three thousand five hundred square foot meeting space. And so capacity for that is gonna be in the hundred and seventy-five to two hundred range for a sit-down type of function.
Two hundred and seventy-five sit-down?
One seventy-five to two hundred.
So do you think that sixty-three proposed park is enough if it's a full loaded event? Do we, do you have enough parking space for, you propose to sixty-three? Let's say a one hundred and seventy-five.
Well, Commissioner, I think the, the, one of the biggest signs in looking at parking for hotels is the percentage of people using the function space who are also guests of the hotel. So we, we calculate it based on the number of rooms, and then we have a factor for additional parking for events for people who are coming or who are not guests. But I, I, I believe the, the parking has been analyzed and we're quite comfortable with the amount of space that's been allocated.
Regarding about the pool, is that exclusive for the, you know, just, just for the tenant, not for the guest?
The pool is just for the guests because that's more liability purposes.
Okay.
So that's got a part of the Marriott, and the Marriott also has key cards for the pool area too. So they require that that is gonna be strictly for the guests. And the pool isn't like a full-fledged party pool. It's more of like a three-foot, kind of like, you know, just kind of getting a little plunge pool. You know, so it's there.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Galan. Commissioner, other commissioners have questions for the applicant or the planning staff? Okay, hearing done. Chair has a few questions. I will go ahead to direct the, the, the assembled applicant team. So in terms of parking, you know, there's number of EV parking spots that's on the side of the building, and those EV spots are also counted in as, as a part of the overall parking, parking numbers, correct?
Yes, that's right.
That's correct.
Okay, so the, the EV parking spots, how many total EV parking spots are, are there? If you can give me a overall count?
There are proposed to be sixteen standard EV charging spots. One accessible and one inaccessible, so eighteen total.
Okay, so in the instance like, like this, I think the traditional methodology is that unless you're charging your, your EV vehicles, you know, you're quote-unquote not kosher to park in, in that spot despite the fact there's no other spots available. Is that, is that a practice standards being practiced here?
I'll, I'll leave my EV for up to four hours even though it takes two to charge. Is that, is that a faux pas?
A little bit. So you, you have four hours to charge your vehicle, so if you left it behind, you know, for five hours, the extra hour, you're nobody can move your vehicle, correct? Okay. You know, to me, that's sort of a, a kind of a, a in-between kind of a scenario where, you know, for parking purposes with eighteen, that's, that's an EV restricted. And granted, you know, there are quite a number of, you know, EVs out, out and about, but also at the same time, you know, it doesn't have served the dual function. And I think you'll probably be, be cast a dirty looks if you are not charging a parking in, in that spot. So I, I kind of consider that half of them, you know, are quote-unquote not really functional per se. And also, moving on, in terms of outside water, stormwater treatment facility locations, can you generally direct my, my vision to it? So it's, I think that's called your C, your C three area?
Yeah, so, so this is actually Patrick Chan with BKF Engineers, I'm the civil engineer on the project and sorry, Steve, go ahead.
So please go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. So we have designed stormwater C three areas around the perimeter of the site. For example, along the, at the corner of Barber and North McCarthy. I know that, that, that there's not a visual currently in front of you. But we do provide all required C three areas around the site. We even incorporate, I believe, some types of permeable pavement and ground-level bar retention. So those will be planted accordingly with the Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Plan requirements. Uh, yes, and this is the preliminary site plan. You can kind of see the areas at the top left corner in that double line with the one dash and one solid. Yeah. And kind of also see them kind of littered around the site. And some porous pavement in the parking areas on the left and the right sides.
Okay.
Where you kind of see the crossed hatch that's a little darker.
I assume that the calc, the calculated areas, they will be consistent with what is required per, per, per code.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And thank you, gentlemen from BKF. This question here is a direct more towards the, the architectural staff of the, of the applicant team. So on the plan G zero dot zero three, we have the, the, the ground level basically your, your entry level plans. So on one side of it, you know, sloping about seven and a half percent, and then the other side of it's sloping out about thirteen and a half percent. You know, in consideration, and also there's def, definitive markings, you know, in terms of the the planned pathways for the, for the ADA purposes. So if the, the member of the public who is an ADA, you know, that's coming on site, would it be, be able to readily identify the pathway of travel in order to, to rise to the to the, to the lobby level?
Yes, great question. Thank you. If somebody is arriving, whose mobility challenged, say by bus, which would be the, the main way they would arrive at the site, they would arrive at this northeast corner of the site, and from there where they take that crosswalk across the entry drive, they can either go up the ramp, which is ADA compliant in terms of both slope and landings, or they can go directly to an elevator lobby at grade. And we can use signage to direct folks to here or.
So you, you, so that the plan is that a proper signage per, per code is, is intended, correct? So you, you, so that the plan is that uh, proper signage per, per code is, is intended, correct?
A, a proper signage and a little bit of natural way of finding, it's only two ways you can go in both of them, have an accessible route.
Okay, all right. Um, so circling back to the applicants, you know, um, like to kinda chat a little bit more about the dining services provided. You know, uh, this is a four and a half stars for your, your description. At the same time, just like to understand sort of the, the meal services, uh, planned, uh, all throughout the day. Breakfast, lunch, dinner, uh, late night. Uh, what is the, what is the, the scope of your service? So someone can enlighten me on that.
So per Marriott requirements, we do have to serve all three meals. And that means we do have breakfast, lunch, and dinner all served there. Uh, there will also probably be like a little uh, a little snack place downstairs where you can buy additional snacks. And because we are serving liquor, we have to have food at the bar area. So everybody has access to food and beverage there.
So approximately how, how, how many square feet is your kitchen area?
Rory?
Rory.
About sixteen hundred square feet per take.
I'm sorry, how many square, how many?
About sixteen hundred.
Okay, and that will, that will handle the uh, the ballroom, um, you know, the, the, the diving room? And uh, the, should say the meeting room and also any, any other particular, you know, uh, uh, order as it, as it come scenarios?
That is correct. According to our uh, food and beverage consultation there with our design, that's, they set out ample space. Modern kitchens these days, that we toured ourselves, they now have what's called a turbo chef and they don't even cook stuff. They just put everything in this little like a glorified toaster almost. Or if you order a burger, they just survey it, they put it in a pouch and then they put it in this hot water and warm it up. But we have a full kitchen that's gonna serve everybody there.
Okay, well, that's a lovely visual ad right about now. And uh, um, you know, so, you know, if, you've gone on, described a little bit about, you know, the sort of more extensive, you know, dining services, is that, is that consistent with your vision in terms of the more extensive, more sort of refined dining services that you're, you're envisioning?
Well, my background is also in, in food and beverage there. I've done a lot there. And I, I always wanna give a quality product to everybody, to anybody there. Anybody comes in there, we really wanna have a quality product, especially now that everybody is a Yelp reviewer. Anybody who spends ten dollars has a Yelp review and is a food critic suddenly. So we have to, you know, accommodate or give everybody like a quality product because that's what the hotels there is for. So we wanna get those good reviews in.
Okay, all right. We appreciate it. And that, that review is pretty instantaneous, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know, a big part of your, your planning process here is with the parking reduction and uh, you know, use the ride sharing services and so on and so forth as part of the, the program. You know, so with, with your described program here, you have, you know, one drop off pickup spots for the ride share. Uh, we have two hundred and sixty rooms with a, um, with just say point seven occupancy rate, you know. Um, and uh, quite a number of guests will be probably utilizing some sort of ride share programs. There's one space. By the way, where's that one space on the, on the floor plan? Just you have a driveway that just goes straight in, straight out. Um, and uh, with, there's really no notch outs for your, uh, for your ride share, ride share spot.
Uh, I think that last diagram, you can kinda show it. I know if Michael, you have it, you can kinda show him how to get it.
Also show the accessibility also.
Oh, what sheet are you referring to?
The, the last I, because uh, the driveway, we would like to see where is the drop off for the ride share? Uh, sheet eight-two dot zero-one, um, first floor plan shows it. Um, but to note, there's, there's a dedicated ride share drop off spot. But there's also queuing space for five vehicles. Um, you know, at that flat level in, in, in front of the, the main doors. And there's queuing space for ride share along the ramp as well. Um, we just have to stripe one as dedicated to ride share uh, as part of the traffic command uh, measures.
So that's the, that's the, uh, the rectangles, uh, that's right, right in that, that product.
Yes, yes. But, but it's not the only place that a ride share can park or that somebody can drop somebody off.
Okay, so where else? Can you just uh, enlighten me on where, where else can the rideshare? Uh, because each a drop, each drop off and pickup is at least a thirty to forty-five seconds if everyone moves pretty, pretty fast. So.
Yeah, so, so, so that rectangle indicates a striped area um, on the, the paving, not on the roadway. Um, to keep that clear for ride share, but I would expect you to get um, five vehicles in a line um, along the curve there. Doing something to pick up a drop off.
Okay.
And now they make sure private vehicles, valet and, and ride share.
Okay, and that, that that's if, if one, everyone knows where, where the, where, where the, the ride share uh, point is, right?
Yeah, that, that rectangle indicates, you know, striping and signage to dedicate a, a portion of that drop off for ride share specifically.
Well, sir, from my vantage point, looking at, you know, if we have five uh, ride share vehicles arriving generally along the same, same timeframe, you know, we, we, we've got a little bit of ten ton and a five ton si- sack situation here. Uh, because not everyone's gonna have the perfect parking skills to, to get in, let's get in and out.
Right.
Just gonna be awfully, uh, and it, it's gonna encroach onto the roadway that which, you know, mitigates the, the, the free, free, free and clear pathways not for vehicles getting in and out.
Um, okay.
So through the chair, I'm, if you can let me, I believe there's some additional exhibits um, in their provision. Is, is that where you're concerned about? You'd like to see the site plan showing where other places a person can be dropped off?
Uh, can be dropped off, you know, I, I think everyone's gonna take the, the closest spot, you know, to, uh, to entry point. Um, whether it's coming through the garage or, you know, uh, or it's gonna come through the, the, the portal in the front. You know, it, it's essentially, you know, there, you're gonna have a congestion there. And if we have a, a guest and functions and a high occupancy date, we're gonna, we're gonna have a little, uh, little civil war going on there with, with the ride share.
We, we also have the valet and the bellman would help direct as well of traffic.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll take your word for it, sir. And uh, so speaking of the valet, um, can you describe a little bit about the valet spur, services? Uh, part of this is understanding your stacker, uh, garage stacker system. I'm sure that's a valet operated uh, stacker system. Um, and also how, how does the valet on, on duty, seven in the mornings to eleven at night? Or can you dis- describe that?
Uh, the valley, the valet system, there, it's gonna be twenty-four seven. There's gonna be always somebody there for the car. Right? Uh, a minimum is gonna be the staff is gonna be there to service those folks doing high function services. We also gonna have what we've, what called as cross-training of personnel. Uh, that's actually one of the activities we like to have for all the staff. Operation wise, so there's also upward mobility for all the employees. So that would say if somebody was working behind the desk and they weren't doing something and they saw that there's a need for additional valets, folks, they will, as long as there, there's training programs on how to operate a car properly or different kinds. Somebody might get a stick shift or something like that, then they can jump in and assist that. And vice versa, we wanna be able to foster a healthy work environment where there's upwards mobility. And hence that way, a lot of folks are gonna get cross-trained in multiple facets in the, in the hotel industry. And that'll then alleviate some, if there's a high need for valet, that multiple people can jump in and help out that section.
Absolutely. And I appreciate your uh, uh, multi, multifunctional roles. So in terms of uh, for the car stackers, can you uh, just enlighten us on, on the, on who uses the stackers and how, how does that work?
Only trained personnel will be able to view the stackers. And the stacker is gonna be one of the last resorts that we have. So we'll have a parking count coming in there. And if we need it, then we'll have the parking stackers. They're kinda right in the center, right there. Most of those are all parking stackers right there. And then it's only a two-car stacking system. So it's not really that hard. You know, you put the car in and it lifts it and then you put a car underneath it. And if you need it, you have to pull the car underneath it out. And then the car from, from above comes down and then you pull that out.
And in addition, there's about a hundred and seventeen self-parking without the need for stacker.
Okay, and is that for uh, uh, in terms of stackers? So is it primarily for guests that are spending overnight where the va, the valets essentially is using that, those particular stacker?
I, I think, uh, they, they have an option. Uh, there's an option for self-parking or valet service.
Okay, all right, thank you. And uh, um, so I've asked a lot of questions, uh, other commissioners. I've got any questions for uh, uh, for the applicant and uh, um, uh, in the city staff, uh, the planning staff? Um, hearing none.
Um, Chair.
Um, Vice Chair, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you Chair. Uh, just, uh, can we put the uh, that one slide up with regard to the parking up again? That showing the number of parking spots?
Yes.
Not that one, but there was like a slide, um, that showed the number of, uh, Oh, the matrix? Space, the matrix, yeah.
Yes.
Definitely, yeah. It wasn't in the plans. It wasn't, it was in uh, Mr. Fasadi's presentation.
Oh, thank you.
It shows the number two hundred and forty-one.
Yes, that's the one.
I can pull that up. Give me a moment.
My, my question actually is, is more, you know, just, just more clarifying around that. So the total proposed is two hundred and forty-one, um, so the two sixteen rooms. Okay, so I'm just wondering, it's kinda going along with uh, Commissioner Galan's question. Um, you know, regards to, you know, number of, you know, he asked about the meeting rooms. I think it was mentioned it was like a hundred and seventy-one to two hundred. And the meeting rooms, you know, could be anything, you know, like, you know, banquet, wedding, uh, at least what I heard. Uh, you know, maybe even like, you know, a conference or something like that. Uh, and I just wanted to maybe understand from, you know, either um, staff or even the applicant. Uh, you know, assuming you have a, you know, let's just say you have like some kind of wedding or even a, you know, like a work conference. And not all the guests, actually, I would say the majority of the guests um, of that conference are not staying in the hotel. Um, and so what would, you know, how would the parking situation work like that? I just maybe, I just wanna understand it from a scenario standpoint.
So uh, I think there are a few options we can do for big events. We can always pre-block the day from a guest booking the rooms. And that's number one. Number two is also, uh, we are in the process of uh, doing the sharing parking with, uh, um, you know, with other neighbors. And this very likely going to happen. So for the big events, we can use valet parking to park the guest car in the shared parking space.
But there's also the, when we know there's a big event coming on, I mean, this is again where we help, where we, uh, we help the, the current workforce. We can give them passes to come into work or we can actually tell them the ride share programs. In addition to that part of this here is if we have a large group coming in, we can also offer them like Uber credits, some of that nature to encourage them to use an Uber to come in here or to carpool together in and give them a, you know, some kind of a, a spit for that. So that's, so it's not gonna be like, hey, suddenly we have an event and we're fully booked. I mean, we actually planned this out and that's why we're gonna have a proper hotel management, hospitality management. When they book everything out in advance, that they can actually keep that parking, an eye on the parking. And most of these events happen on the weekends, right? So if it's a weekend event, that's also where it's less hotel guests are on the weekends.
Yeah, you know, interestingly enough, we actually, when we started the application um, a couple of years ago, we actually hired an independent uh, TDM. And they actually think we're fifty percent overpark compared to everybody else in the United States in the hospitality industry. Phil Peters has the most requirement of parking while San Jose is actually shooting to go zero parking just because of this new going green admission and all that stuff. And historically, a lot of hotel guests does not bring their own, um, their own cars per se because a lot of them are business traveler and these would be probably one of the highest clientele as well. So we're just using, like you said, all these worst case scenario, but historically and data show this is actually, um, and again, we could share the, the report and we did share it with the planning department early on. But we have to use the city uh, TDM consultant versus our own. But we wanted to kind of uh, share that at the beginning of time. And they say that, you know, our parking is actually supersede over fifty percent compared to any hotels out there, uh, other than Milpitas.
Chair, if I may respond to that. So if the applicant wishes to further reduce the parking, they are more than welcome to suggest some of the additional TDM measures that they want to apply. Um, they have applied again the low hanging fruit of the TDM measures that we have available. And I can identify at least three additional measures that would get them thirty additional points that would go from a ten percent parking reduction to a thirty percent parking reduction. And let me, I, I, while we're sitting here, I've done a few numbers. Let me just give those to you. Looking at the table you have in front of you, again, you see that the, the total requirement is two hundred and fifty-eight. And I take exception to the idea that Milpitas has higher parking standards than other municipalities. Again, the city earlier this year reduced its parking standards significantly, taking it from one per room to point seven per room, which is the industry standard. We didn't just come up with that number. We worked diligently with um, representatives from Marriott Corporation that, that were building the Element Hotel. And our numbers represent the current industry standard. And in, in addition to reducing the minimum parking standard, we also provide a, additional significant parking reductions through the application of strong TDM measures, but they have to be real TDM measures. They, they can't be just something on paper. Um, you know, we, we have to see those and we've got a number of them listed here. But let me just give you a few of the additional ones that could be applied here, I think, easily. So again, re- requirements two hundred and fifty-eight, we, with the ten percent reduction, we've got that down to two thirty-two. And the total, and that's um, less than the total proposed two forty-one. That gives us, um, my math is correct. Uh, extra nine spaces. That's two forty-one minus the two thirty-two. That's with a ten percent parking reduction. If you were to apply one additional measure, uh, that might be issue.
Uh, Director Thomas, I think your audio cut out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you were to apply, if, if the applicant were to apply one additional measure that's on our table and I'll just, there's, there's three of them I can number, but the one I'm gonna use is monthly passes for employees. If you were to provide that and assure that and that we can add that as a condition of approval tonight, that would get you up, uh, we'll bump you up a point. That'll get you to thirty points, excuse me, forty points. That will get you a twenty percent reduction. So rather than um, a requirement of two thirty-two with a twenty percent reduction, you would only be required to have two hundred and six parking spaces. So that would give you an, uh, two fifty-eight minus the two oh-six is thirty-five additional parking spaces. If you were, if you were to apply two additional ones and I, the two that come to mind, I, I, for the life of me, I do not know why you would not want to have an airport shuttle for this hotel. You're very close to the San Jose Airport. That would get you an additional ten points. And if you then use that shuttle to take your guests to three place, just three places, Great Mall, the Bart Station, Levi Stadium, that will give you ten additional points, thirty more points, sixty more, a thirty percent reduction. That will get you down to a requirement of one hundred and eighty-one parking spaces. So that total required, that's now two thirty-two, would go down
Not an issue.
Sixty parking spaces. So uh, now you would still, you, you, you know, you've shown us that you can provide two hundred and thirty-one spaces on the site. So keep the two forty-one, but what we're playing with here is the parking requirement, not the restriction, but the parking requirement. Right now, your parking requirement is two thirty-two. If you do some of these additional real TDM measures, you can get that down to a hundred and eighty-one. And that will give you plenty of part sixty additional parking spaces that you can use for guests coming to the hotel. So there are some ways of doing that. Again, I would advise the commission if you want to see some of that. We can certainly add conditions to the approval of this uh, project tonight.
Yeah, so Mr. Thomas, I, so we're not asking to reduce parking. We're already overparked by the required parking from the planning department. We were just trying to address some of the question from the commissioner in the worst case scenario. We're actually not asking for any more reduction given that we already overparked. And actually, we came in feeling really good because the total required was two thirty-two and we came with two forty-one. And now we're just talking about what-if scenario.
And now we're just talking about what-if scenario in terms of, all of a sudden, the whole hotel is packed up, how do we mitigate the parking? But if we go back to what was required from this project, we not only meet it, but we exceeded that already.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's, that's why we're here tonight, is because you have met the requirement. The requirement is two hundred and fifty-eight, you've reduced that ten percent. I'm just giving, I'm just suggesting to the commission that there are other options for reducing the parking requirement on the site, if that's their goal.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, Director Thomas, through the chair, that was the question that Mr. Sam was, you know, stated. He actually did, I was just looking at, primarily looking at worst case scenario, so that particular, you know, question was answered. I do have a second question, just in terms of, this might be more for, you know, the planning department. But I just want to make sure that, you know, just maybe more at a high level in terms of, you know, a lot of times, we've, we've, you know, had applicants, you know, come to, you know, the commission. And, you know, I know the city has, you know, different ordinance or certain requirements, you know, for, you know, community benefit. I just wanted to confirm from the, you know, the planning staff, if those have all been met.
Through the chair, well, two things, one, we do have a provision about applying for community benefit in certain areas if an exception is being made. So if the applicant is asking for an exception to the standards, they typically supplement it with a community benefit. The project isn't media, asking for any exceptions. What they are doing, and maybe this is what you were asking, are they willing to pay the affordable housing fees, the public art fees, the fees outside of a typical planning? And the answer is yes, all the fees associated with new development have been reviewed by both the applicant and the city, and they're, they're aware that they'd have to pay those fees prior to issuance of building permit. Does that answer your question, Vice Chair?
It does, that does answer my, my question, thank you. Chair, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioners, any other questions for, for either the applicant or the planning staff? Okay, hearing none in this case here. There's a few more questions for the, for the applicant team. In terms of the, the colorations and also for the facade, that which is a proposed. You know, it's a fairly monochromatic scheme, that's, that's a envision. That particular, that particular scheme is that dictated by, by the franchise? Or is it aesthetic solutions that you have chosen?
That, that actually came from Marriott has some gut, we actually have to get it approved also by the Marriott too, before we even give it to you folks. So the Marriott has to approve the color scheme. And we had to bring on a consultant, HBA Design, which is actually one on the shortlist of their list, the consultants. And they kind of came up that with the architectural team with the color palette.
Okay, appreciate that comment. You know, the, the scheme, as it stands right now, it provides a fairly flat, sort of two dimensional feel to it. And also from intuitive, instinctive facets. You know, looking at it, if I were driving, driving down McCarthy and looking at us and say, which way do I go in the parking garage and how, how to get in? You know, there's not a lot of visual signs and clues, way sign injuries are great, but however, there's a certain hierarchy of colorations or, or pop out where you, you address the eyes to the particular spots. I think that, that will be helpful in terms of allowing for, for folks to find, to find things easier. And, but also at the same time, you know, seeing this, you know, granite, you have corner elements, strong corner elements. Sort of casting a verticality to it. But at the same time, you know, the monochromatic scheme in of itself, you know, without, without much gradations of grays or, or, you know, separations. It reads fairly, fairly one, one plane and one, one dimensional in that, in that respect. So, you know, if the project, you know, is, is being considered favorably by the, by the commission. You know, this is something that, you know, I would, I would strongly encourage the, the design team to take another crack at adding some, some life to it. As it stands right now, it's just a, pretty, pretty flat, attractive but flat. So, and the second, the second question here is, you have talked about in your, in your package about the micro mobility devices. So in terms of managing them, can, can someone from the applicant team kind of give me a little bit more education on? You know, you have bikes and you have, you know, they've gone wayward, you know, off somewhere else. And do you have someone that goes around collecting them, or do you have devices that can find, refine, refine these, these micro mobility devices and bring them home?
Some of the micro devices kind of like a Lime, right, will have a designated area for them. So that's going to be kind of third-partied out, in essence. So we have a designated area for them to be parked, right, and then they can take them from there. Now, when it comes to bikes that the hotel will give out, I mean, there will probably be a deposit made where they have to return it. They can't just take a bike somewhere and just leave it there, because it's going to be, it's pretty much free to the, the resident, right? So room number three or four comes down, they borrow the bike. They're going to have to bring the bike back, or else they're going to get charged to the room for that bike, right? So nobody wants to spend five hundred bucks on a bike that didn't return. So that's going to be one of the turn factors of leaving it littered around town somewhere, they're going to bring it back, or else they're going to have to pay for the bike. Does that help answer your question? For, for the most part, it will be managed by the third party, either Lime or Uber, or whichever who we partnered with.
Okay, alright. So, so in other words, a third-party management on the, on the going vertical devices? And the bicyclist is managed by, via a heavy deposit?
Yes.
Okay, so in that case, there, just to take it one step further. If the guest fails to return it and forfeit the, the deposit, how do you go about reacquiring? Otherwise, we've got another piece of furniture on the, on the.
Yeah, the bikes have a GPS system on, just like Lime does, it's a GPS tracking system.
Alright, so you can, you can reacquire knowing where it is.
That is correct.
Okay.
Oh, Chair, may I add, so sorry, on that, on that topic, the city does not yet have a franchise agreement with any purveyor for bicycles or scooters. We are working on a, we're calling a micro mobility policy. And once we do that, then we would expect to work with Lime or, or Bird or one of the other franchise operators to operate in the city. They will need an agreement with the city to use our public right-of-way.
Okay, one of the earlier comments by one of the applicant team, I believe, Miss, Miss Hu. Know that that is possibly a secondary overflow parking agreement. So question here is for Planning Director. If, if that agreement is in existence, it has to be in writing, and it's been, will be rendered as part of the conditions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And does that, does that agreement need to be, need to be recorded on the, on the?
Well, I'll, I'll say, that's, that's correct if it's part of the required parking, but the hotel meets its parking requirement now, so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't need to be in place for us to count it toward required parking. And so the way I understood it is that if they are having a large event at the hotel, they would have that type of parking agreement in place. And that, that would be a, a private agreement between the two parties, and the city would not be involved.
Okay.
I'll just, okay, if I could piggyback on that real quick. Some things like the airport shuttle, like a parking agreement with a neighboring property are things that management would be open to doing, to solve problems if they come up. But we don't want to make those conditions of entitlement, because we can meet the parking requirement without it. And because making them conditions of entitlement involves.
Right, and also, like Mr. Net, like Mr. Net say, we would explore all the other option with the required reduction that you mentioned earlier, with all those other points that we've, we could fulfill that first.
Okay, I understand, Mr. Sam.
Reality, you know, this hotel's location is in the high-tech zone. So during the business days, from Monday through Thursday, will be occupied mainly by the hotel travelers. But from Fridays through Sunday, I'm pretty positive that according to the track record, historical record, we will have a lot more than enough parking space to the community, to the events.
Okay, thank you, Miss Hu. Last question here is, this is involving the service elevator that comes down into the garage. So I assume that is a key, key secured service elevator that all the employees with keys can access that particular elevator?
That is correct, the service elevators there is all key security. And again, like I mentioned in my earlier statements, there is, Marriott has its own security protocol that we have to abide by. So whatever they dictate, we have to make sure, so it's going to be an additional layer to what even the city requires.
Sure, does that service elevator go all the way up to the, to the top floor?
No, it does not, the service elevator only goes to the first floor.
Okay, alright, so hence, there's no penthouse in the, on the roof, a roof elevation, roof perspective, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, alright. And the other, the other service elevator that's on the corner of the garage, is that, is that going all the way? Okay.
It's also for, that's for laundry use, that's mainly for laundry drop-off and for linen, and it only goes to the first floor.
Okay, alright. And again, that's a key service, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, alright, and thank you very much. So, Commissioners, any other additional questions for the applicant and their consulting team?
Chair, have a question?
Commissioner Galong.
Regarding about the landscaping, you are removing thirty-six protected trees. And then you are proposing seventy-six new onsite trees. And then following varieties, which one of trees are going to plant in the area? There's birch, western red bud, I'd like to see those trees that you're going to plant around the hotel.
Sure, hi, this is Jesse Markman, the landscape architect on the project. Michael, if you wouldn't mind, I don't know if you have it handy, but pulling up a sheet we have in the package, in our package, it's sheet L three point zero one. Which has the plant, planting plan. It has the plant list, and it calls out which trees are being placed where on the site. It's a combination of trees, as you noted. For the most part, kind of around the perimeter of the site, we're using the Brisbane box, which does very well in Milpitas. Along with some Chinese pastash, we have some of the red buds going into some of the treatment areas for pops of color. We have some birch along the front of the hotel, and then we have some crape myrtles as well along McCarthy for some color, seasonal color.
Do, do you have a picture that I can see?
He, I'm, I'm sharing it right now, Commissioner Galong. Is this the correct?
Yes.
Oops. Here we go.
Yeah, that, that's the planting plan. And with your specific question, this package does not have the pictures of each individual trees included here. These are something we could provide if needed, or if requested. These are all very, very typical, we know they work quite well in, in Milpitas.
Okay, and I have my second question is, facing McCarthy Boulevard. I, I see the, the building, you know, where the hotel sign. It says hotel. Why that corner is, that is bigger than the other, you know, compared to others? Why, why it's bigger? Are you, you're facing McCarthy Boulevard? Do you have that? Yeah, okay. Northwest, looking northwest from McCarthy Boulevard. You can see the gray.
Are, are you asking why the landscape area is larger?
No, no, not the landscape, this is the building.
Of the building, okay.
Yeah.
Give me one moment, let me see if I could find that for you. Okay, Chair, Commissioner Galong, was it?
Yeah, that, yeah, that corner, why it's bigger compared to other building, other side? If you're facing northwest from McCarthy Boulevard, you see that hotel sign, that gray color?
Yes. I, up, above here, sir?
Yes, 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 yes. Is there glass window, or what type of window are this? There are glass, there's some glass, right? Or?
The window frame is, but it is glass. I don't think this side is bigger, but it may be the way is displayed.
It's just an optical illusion, it's the size of the other tower.
Okay, and then, okay, I've seen two people walking. Is there, is there a sign, like a pedestrian sign? I think the Chairman Chow asked this question earlier. If you're going down from the lobby, and there's people walking on the walkway, is there a sign? Or like a pedestrian sign for that? You see that?
Yes, there probably will be low sign that indicates, you know, front entrance, parking. But as we mentioned earlier, there's only three paths pedestrian can take from that point. Back out to the bus stop at the new sidewalk, up the ramp, or a long path that leads to the elevator core at the parking level. There's really nowhere else they can, they can go.
Okay.
From there, if they follow the paving.
Okay, thank you, take it, Chair.
Thank you. And while Mr. Fassadi has this particular perspective on, on screen. So the, the bottom left perspective is where the cursor is indicating. So that is really sort of just indicating that the hotel alone, without the proposed hotel alone, without any of the adjacent structures that are currently standing, standing in place, correct? Office building on, on the right side, and the one-story, one-story R and D building. In a similar text, texturization. So those were not demonstrated on this particular perspective, correct?
They're not in the picture, because see that little white on the top right-hand corner, that little white building? That's actually the building, because there's actually more parking next to our building. No, go to the right, please, yeah, that. See that little right to the top? That's the actual, that's the Logitech building, I believe it is. And then there's creative labs, and then they also have parking right next to us. And then if you go to the opposite corner, there's actually a, a street between us. And then they have parking, and then they're building. So there is no building right next to us.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification. And I understand Planning Director has some clarifications. Director Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. So, just a couple of things really quickly. Vice Chair Chuon asked about community benefits, and as Partner Michael Fassadi described, although they're not required. I, I do want to point out that, we haven't talked too much about this, but the hotel does act on through the trail that is along the creek, the Coyote Creek. So while it won't be a condition of approval for the hotel, I, it's my understanding and speaking with the developers, that they are open to the idea of, at some point, providing a connection for their guests and the public to the trail. And to that end, there is a condition of approval attached, that there will be a sidewalk required along Barber Lane, which runs along the northern side of the property. And that, that is at some future date, that the sidewalk would run to a possible gate that would lead to the trail. So that, that's a community benefit that is associated with the hotel, though not directly required. I also want to take just a moment to clarify what I was saying earlier, sorry, I went into a little bit of detail. And I always get myself into trouble when I use numbers, but I want to talk just a little about why I was mentioning the parking. Again, if, if there are ways of reducing the overall parking requirement at the site, again, not suggesting that we reduce parking on the site, the two forty-one that is provided there, I think is fine. But what I was suggesting is that by, by reducing the requirement, then you have some flexibility there. Again, I would say probably from thirty, thirty to forty parking spaces then are no longer, you know, quote unquote, required. Those become available to do things like that, that can be translated into additional square footage for either the bar or the restaurant or the meeting space. You could also, if they wanted to, reduce the number of parking stackers that are required. So I was simply suggesting that by reducing the requirement, then you have some flexibility there. So I was simply suggesting that by reducing the parking requirement, then you have, then we can play with the difference between that requirement and the, the actual number of spaces on the site. And that can be used a, a number of different ways. Um, I, I know, um, there, there was some discussion previously about maybe increasing the number of rooms on the side of a few. So if, if we were looking at that, we would have, again, I guess what I'm suggesting is the parking is somewhat adjustable depending on which of those TDM measures are applied. And I, I would say that's one of the strengths of our, uh, parking, the current parking requirements, that there's a great deal of flexibility in there. Um, one, once you, but, once you figure out what the parking requirement is, and then how much space you have available on the site, then, then we can play with those, uh, measures to uh, get some flexibility on how, how big the uses are on the site.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Appreciate your comment and clarification. And, uh, with us this evening, we also have, uh, um, you know, Assistant Fire Marshal Jaime Garcia. Um, I'd like to introduce him to the, uh, to the commissioners right now. And you, uh, understand Commissioner Sarah Dell had a question earlier, uh, for, for Milpitas Fire. Um, would you like to address that with the Assistant Chief right now?
Yes, I would. I just, um, I think my question was probably answered that Alex had to the developer. And, you know, I just wanted to know for the, uh, the ballroom areas, you know, what's a maximum, maximum occupancy for those um, areas, but I think it was answered already. And I just, a, a side comment. Um, beautiful building. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarah Dell. Um, and, uh, um, commissioners, uh, since I'm not able to see your, see you raising your hands, would you please, uh, uh, speak up? So I know, I will know that you'd like to speak, uh, and ask questions of Assistant Fire Chief. Okay, hearing none. I have one question for, uh, Assistant Chief Garcia. Uh, this is in regards to stairwell one. Uh, this, this exits out, uh, in internally, you know, through the, uh, through the, uh, in front of the, the, the meeting space and goes through into the, the outdoor, outdoor public areas. Uh, is Milpitas Fire Department okay with that particular arrangement?
Uh, good evening, Chair, Assistant Fire Chief, um, Honorable members of the Planning Commission. Um, yes, the, when we evaluated this, we made sure that the, the location, the orientation and whatnot relative to the exiting and to the meeting room was adequate and compliant with the fire code. Uh, I just want to go back a little bit to the meeting room, uh, per the original question from Planning Commissioner Saradella. Um, when this thing is being utilized as a full banquet room at full capacity, um, you're looking at an occupant load of no more than five hundred and thirty-six with an occupant load factor of seven square foot per person. That being said, that's what you currently have. And based on this layout, that is the most intense room in terms of assembly gathering, um, next to the outdoor lounge. So to that end, uh, we made sure that, uh, obviously based on the exiting plan, which I'm looking at to my right, that we had proper exiting distance to exits, uh, even including whatever necessary, when we have fifty or more, we have adequate panic hardware. So we're ensuring that we are meeting the minimum life safety under the fire, uh, fire and building codes.
Okay, thank you, Chief Samura. And, uh, so it, it is, it is allowable for for, uh, fire stairwell to exit into, exit into interior space and to exit out to the exterior via a, another common, common hallway. Is that, I just want to make sure that, that is correct.
Yeah, one of the things we have to ensure is making sure that when we do exit people and we evacuate them, they, they are obviously leaving out to the public way. So, uh, we're making sure that not only do we deal with whether, whatever interior occupant that may be traversing inside the building, but anything else that is an assembly use has an ability to go and exit through whatever means necessary to get out to the public way.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your comments. Um, Commissioners, um, any other questions for Chief Samura? Um, hearing, hearing none, Chief Samura, thank you very much for your time this evening, uh, joining the planning commission meeting. Wish you a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And also, as, as, uh, clarification, and I want to clarify this with the um, Commissioner, excuse me, with Director Thomas. It's the MM RP that's attached with this particular application, the attachment C, that is done by First Carbon Solutions and, uh, First Carbon Solutions also serves as a consultant to the, to the cities, uh, in some capacity. So is there a need for us to, uh, to disclose that for that purpose?
Oh, thank you for noting that. Um, two different, that large company, so two different sections of the, of the company. One on the planning side and one on the review side. So I, I don't think the two, um, necessarily collaborate on items.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comment. And, uh, we also have with us, uh, um, uh, Economic Development Director, um, Alex Andrade, uh, with us this evening. So, uh, Commissioners, any questions for, uh, Director Andrade? Uh, anyone? Questions? Um, Chair has one question for Director Andrade, um, with respect, excuse me, with respect to the, um, Milpitas Hotel Room count. Um, are we at the point now where we're quote unquote with or without this particular hotel? Uh, proposed hotel before us, uh, are we over a hotel room by any chance?
Good evening, Chair Tao, Vice Chair Chuon and Planning Commission. It's my honor to serve as the Director of Economic Development and to be here before you on this, uh, project that I believe is a economic catalyst. Uh, Chair Tao, just so that I make sure I'm understanding the question, are you trying to figure out whether we might be reaching a saturation point as it relates to our overall, uh, hotel room count in Milpitas?
Correct. You know, are we, are we, are we at near or over that, that threshold? Um, you know, the, the whole point here is we, we want to do smart development and, uh, we don't want to unnecessarily build things where, where they don't come.
Yeah, thank you for that. At the moment, we have twenty hotels, um, that are somewhere, don't quote me on the exact amount, but we're somewhere around twenty-seven hundred keys to twenty-nine hundred keys. Um, we do have the Element Hotel that's scheduled to open in about a month or month and a half. Uh, and then, of course, we have this, this hotel. I think that given the current situation in the pandemic, of, obviously, we have heard a lot about the, uh, the pandemic's effect on the hotel and travel industry. But I do think that, um, the Silicon Valley market is a very strong market, specifically as it relates to business travel. At this particular point in time, we are not doing incredibly well in business travel, but I do think, uh, and strongly believe that, uh, Silicon Valley is still what I've heard some hotel representatives call the darling of the hotel market in the United States. At this point in time, it's obviously incredibly challenging. Um, but I do think that Milpitas and the Silicon Valley market can withstand additional keys. Um, and there's, there's lots of benefits of which I'd like to talk about, uh, in a little bit, but does that answer your question, Chair Tao?
Answers, that, that answers the questions directly. Thank you very much. And you have other comments that you may, you may like to impart?
If you don't mind, sure.
Please.
Yeah, I, I have some comments and it's, it's very, very similar to what you've heard, uh, Katie San and Frank, uh, or Fred talk about. But we, we often are tracking our hotel, um, uh, trends and metrics. And so some of the things that I've been learning most recently is this, the Tribute brand in the Bay Area, at this particular point in time, there's only one other one located in the Bay Area and it's in Palo Alto and it's, it's it's a train. Um, the Marriott brand, as we've been hearing about, is considered an upper upscale hotel, which Milpitas has some really good hotels, but we will, we would really welcome an upper upscale hotel. And I think I mentioned this, uh, some months ago, when I gave a presentation on the hotel and travel industry study that we issued in January of this year, the hospitality industry has a very strong multiplier effect. And so just consider this, for every one hundred dollars that a guest spends at a hotel for one night, that same hotel guest turns around and spends two hundred and twenty-two additional dollars on that trip through transportation, food, beverage, entertainment, and just goods and services within that general area. For that multiple air effect is for us the gift that keeps, keeps on giving, uh, which is incredibly important for us, especially in a time when we're so heavily reliant on TOT and sales tax as our revenues. Um, and right now, we're certainly not receiving the TOT of revenue generation that we were before the COVID hit, of course, but it's still a very important revenue source for us. And remember that hotels not only provide TOT revenue, but also sales tax. So, um, we heard Katie say earlier that this hotel is expected to generate around two million dollars of TOT annually. I, we looked at hotels around Milpitas. I can't tell you the exact names, but based on the number of keys and what we saw was anywhere between seven hundred thousand dollars being generated on an annual basis in regards to TOT, up to one point five million dollars. I think what's going to set this hotel apart is that upper upscale, the higher-end products associated with this hotel. If there was a Michelin rated, uh, restaurant, those types of, uh, services and amenities can definitely get us to two million dollars in annual TOT revenues. The other thing that's really important here is that it's not only about the revenues, but it's also about the jobs. And so what we learned when we were doing this report is that if we have a representative property with about a hundred occupied hotel rooms, it generally supports about two hundred and forty-one total jobs. And that includes a hundred and thirty-seven direct jobs, hotel jobs, and a hundred and four indirect and induced jobs. So there again, it produces, uh, an important value to the city. So I just wanted to mention those few reasons of why the Office of Economic Development is very much strongly supporting this hotel project for you tonight. Happy to answer any other questions that you, uh, and the planning commission may have. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Director Andrade. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for, uh, Director Andrade? Uh, please speak up. Vice Chair, did you, uh, did, Vice Chair Chuon, were, were you raising your hand? Okay, thank you. And Director Andrade, thank you very much for your, for your time this evening and, uh, time to take off that tie. Enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We, we appreciate your time. Um, it looks like we also have, uh, uh, Mr. Steve Chan, the Transportation Engineer with the city. Um, does anyone, uh, does any, uh, does Commissioners have any questions for, uh, Mr. Chan, uh, for, for traffic? Items? Uh, since I cannot see everyone's faces, if you will, kindly speak up. Okay, hearing none, um, uh, Mr. Chan, well, thank you very much for your time this evening. We appreciate your, your, your company as well. So, um, with this item being a public hearing item and, uh, you know, I'd like to go ahead to um, to hear any public comments that may be, uh, waiting in the queue. So, uh, Ms. Medina, do we have any public, uh, members of the public in the, in the queue waiting to comment?
Hi Chair, at this time, we do not have anybody in the queue for public comment.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your, um, notes. And so, um, may I have a motion from the Commissioner to, uh, close the public comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Alcorn and second by Commissioner Chuon. So I'll, I'll go down the line for a commissioner vote. So Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Sarah Dell?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Alcorn?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuon?
Aye.
Uh, Chair, I as well, as motion passes six, zero, and, uh, but the public hearing is closed. Um, so Commissioners, deliberations, comments, thoughts? Um, before we get into the, the motions, um, for this particular public hearing item, you know, your, your perspectives is really appreciated for, for, uh, discussions. I'll start with, uh, Commissioner, uh, with Vice Chair Chuon. Uh, any, any comments, thoughts and, uh, deliberation points?
Uh, just overall, I, uh, you know, just my own, you know, thoughts around the project, um, you know, just reviewing all the material, uh, looks like a, a very exciting, you know, project for Milpitas. And, um, you know, appreciate, um, you know, the consideration of, of, you know, having a, a brand like Marriott, you know, come to Milpitas. Um, that's all I, all the comments I have there.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And Commissioner Alcorn?
Uh, I, uh, have no comments.
Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Sarah Dell?
Yes, uh, if Alex is excited about it, boy, I'm excited about it too. This should be a great asset to our wonderful city. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Sarah Dell. I'm glad to know that Commissioner, uh, Director Andrade's energy is transferred. And Commissioner Galan? Uh, Commissioner Galan, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, I'm excited. I'd like to see that Marriott in that area.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Albana? Uh, Commissioner Albana, any, uh, any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was having a hard time on muting. Yes, well, um, uh, I'm very excited and I'm very happy that we're having this kind of, uh, development in that area. We have improved that site, uh, you know, because right now it's a very old building. I, I wanted to run something also with, uh, Director Thomas. If we run for the approval of this, do we do like, do we add like, uh, the applicants can use their options to reduce their parking requirements? And yet, but that will be, you know, uh, at their discretion so that they can use, if they need more parking, they can use that. Remember, we talked about it, that you, you said that they have the option to reduce. I was just thinking. Do we add that to the, if we approve this?
Yes, that's actually a very good question. And, um, of course, using those options are always available to them. One thing that you could do if you wanted to, uh, mention uh, the options are available, um, normally, uh, if a approval is given by the planning commission and there are changes that are made after the approval, it typically comes back to the planning commission, but we could write the conditions such that, um, you can delegate that to the planning director with the staff and, and we would take a look at it. Um, knowing that, that was your intent, is that if the applicant wishes to use those, um, those options, then we could just take care of that at staff level and not have to bring it back to the planning commission. Of course, if we were to do that, I, I, I would make a point of, of informing the that are at your next meeting after any of those changes were made.
Um, I think that would be, that would be good if they can use that extra option. Yeah, to reduce the parking, but their option, but they could also, I don't know how to use the words, but if you could do that, that would be good if we can add that to the approval tonight.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I, it's up to the planning commission, um, among yourselves, if you want to talk about that. I, I, I actually think that's a good idea. Again, we would leave it very flexible such that we wouldn't require them to use, we wouldn't require the applicant to use those, but it would certainly, um, be open to them, uh, for future discussion. And then, um, it would, it would, uh, if you delegate that down to me and, uh, to the planning director, the planning and we, um, that would, that would create minor problems significantly. If you're comfortable with doing that, I'm not trying.
Yes, through, through the chair. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana and, uh, and thank you Commissioners for your, uh, for your thoughts and, uh, and the, uh, deliberative points. You know, um, find a hotel, you know, I think what, what's attractive to me is a, is a four and a half stars. But also at the same time, you know, that, uh, associated services, I think somewhat hamstrung and also I think that, that we don't have interior architecture on, on display here. So, you know, the, the exact finish and whatnots, you know, how it, it pairs up to a four and a half, possibly higher, you know, stars. You know, find that the dining options is probably more on the four-star side, you know, in terms of, you know, the, the accommodations and, and whatnots. So wish, you know, that, uh, it can be a stronger, uh, a stronger element in, in, in your, uh, in your consideration moving forward. it can be a stronger, uh, a stronger element in, in, in your, uh, in your consideration moving forward. Obviously, it is, you know, the applicant's, uh, you know, property and, uh, uh, we want to, you know, certainly want to wish a success. I, you know, I'm find the coloration, you know, on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, elevation, you know, especially that the McCarthy facing site, you know, rather, you know, rather monochromatic to the point of, uh, of, there's no, there's no eye catching point, you know, if we, if the applicant drives down Santa Moss Expressway crossing one-on-one, you'll see a one building in Santa Clara that turns a corner, but it looks like one flat surface. And this building here has a similar quality where if I look at from the, from the perspective from either direction, it is a one flat surface in that, in that respect, you know, find that disappointing and that uh, I wouldn't, I would highly encourage this, this, our planning staff and the, the applicant, you know, find some, um, find some highlighting cross, uh, ability to either altering the shade of the gray. I understand gray is in your, in your wheelhouse and, you know, using that, um, or using some other methodologies to, to basically set a building, give it a three dimensional qualities that was your, you know, we, I think we would like to, to, to see. So I will leave that to the discretion of the, uh, the Planning Director and and that, uh, senior staff to, uh, to make this thing a improved version of what is right now, you know, uh. So with that said, um, um, Commissioners, any other, uh, parting thoughts, comments? For the, for this item? Okay, um, hearing none. And can I, can I have a motion, uh, from, from Commissioner?
Vice Chair is raising his hand.
Oh, sorry, uh, Vice Chair, would you please make a motion, please?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two-one dash zero-two-zero, approving site development permit number SD one-nine dash zero-zero-one-two, conditional use permit number UP one-nine dash zero-zero-one-two, treatment removal permit number TR one-nine dash zero-zero-three-zero, and environmental assessment number EA one-nine dash zero-zero-zero-eight, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, and Vice, and Vice Chair, if, uh, there was a, are there discussions between Commissioner Albana and Chair in terms of allowing for the, uh, staff, uh, some leeways in terms of crafting, uh, uh, additional language relating to to possible parking, uh, would you like to?
Yes, uh, and, and, yes, uh, in a, in addition to, um, the, uh, proposed, um, resolution, uh, to also include, um, the comments from Commissioner Albana in regards to parking. Um, and just before I could, I, I see, uh, Mr. Fassati has his hands up.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and to the Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair. I, I believe, um, what a condition state, stated is the following. The applicant shall incorporate additional transportation management measures in an effort to reduce parking impacts to the satisfaction of the Planning Director or the DEX at me. That would give us the ability to work with the applicant to incorporate those measures that are determined as point measures in our municipal code and provide them credit to reduce parking impacts. That's the first portion.
Yeah, the, the only change I would, the only change I would make or suggest is that it not be shall, but may. I think it was the intent of Commissioner Albana that we'd not be required. But if they want to work with staff to look at it, we'd certainly be open to it. I think the important thing was that it would be delegated down to staff rather than having to come back to the Planning Commission. And we would report back to whatever changes were being, if that's works.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Yes, the applicant may incorporate additional transportation management measures.
And Vice Chair, the motion maker, uh, is the language agreeable to, to the motion maker?
Yes, language is agreeable to the motion maker. So, um, if need be, uh, going to, um, City Attorney, do I need to restate the motion and then, uh, make a comment that, uh, you know, based upon language, uh, provided by both, um, uh, Senior Planner, uh, Michael Fassati and, uh, Planning Director Thomas?
Um, can I get clarification first before we go into how to restate the motion? Can I get clarification on the motion first?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Alcorn.
Um, is, uh, i- is this opening the door to possibly allowing them to reduce the amount of parking they currently have? Um, total spaces offered? Cause that, the way the motion is stated, it sounds like there's, uh, an avenue for them to go from, uh, two forty, two forty, I, it's two forty something, um, and actually reduce the actual provided parking. Is that?
No, uh, if I may, through the chair, but the intent is not to reduce the amount of parking that is provided. It would stay at two forty-one. But we would, uh, be able to reduce, again, the parking requirement.
I understand the intent.
Yeah, yeah.
The wording though seems like it leaves the door open to actually reduce the provided amount of parking spaces, which I am not on board with that whatsoever.
No, that will increase the public parking, reduce the guest.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the intent of this, this condition. Um, I just want to make sure the wording is in such a way that it doesn't lead to, I mean, don't get me wrong, Director Thomas, I, I trust you completely, but I, I want to make sure that the legality of this does not the lend it open road to actually reducing the total amount of parking spaces provided.
And Commissioner Alcorn, may I suggest that, you know, if we can add the additional language behind that, uh, the staff suggestion here's, and, uh, uh, in the, under no circumstance shall the park, total parking spaces provided on site be less than two hundred and forty-one as currently designated.
Absolutely, I am on board.
Okay, um, so, uh, motion maker, is that, is that additional clarification from the Commissioner Alcorn, would that be acceptable to the motion maker?
That is acceptable to, uh, to me, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, City Attorney, uh, this is all copacetic and the word just dead?
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear from the record that, uh, the commission has agreed to the ongoing conditions. Um, so I don't think it needs to be restated, it just needs to be seconded.
Thank you for your blessing. We appreciate it. And as a, we have a motion on the floor. Let me have a second, please.
Second.
Okay, uh, first, first word I heard is from Commissioner Albana. So we have a motion, um, as, as made by Vice Chair Chuon and a second by, um, Commissioner Albana. And Chair would, uh, go down the line for the Commissioner votes. And, uh, Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarah Della?
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Chuon?
Aye.
Chair, I as well. So motion passes six, nothing. Uh, you know, I'd like to take this moment here to, uh, to thank the, the applicant and the, just uh, and their team for the, for being with us this evening and bringing forward in, um, is a hotel project that, that will, um, be mutually beneficial and would look forward to, uh, the applicant team to continue to work with the city staff to improve upon the project that is before us this evening. I think it's, you know, the design process is never ending, but however, you know, the improvement and improvement for, for your brand, branded, uh, uh, structure in the, in the hotel and the, and the city will live together in the, in the, for a long period of time. So we look forward to a, a good project that we all are going to be proud of. Thank you very much. And congratulations. And, uh, moving on to the next gen item here is new business. And under that, there's no items there. And there's so, some legal needs for, uh, for the evening. Uh, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission, or department head to the City of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the City Council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. Uh, the time, this time limit shall be strictly enforced. Uh, in the next agenda item here is, uh, the German. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarah Della. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sarah Della, second by Commissioner Galan. Uh, may I have a, a, I from everyone?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Aye, good night.
Good night. Thank you for the motion.
Night, everybody.
And I thank you, everyone, for your time this evening, and we look forward to see you on the next meeting. Take, take care, good night.